America's Town Meeting of the Air. Town Meeting Tonight, Town Meeting Tonight. Bring your questions to the old Town Hall. What's the question? Personal liberty and the government. Personal liberty and the government. Come to the old Town Hall and talk it over. Town Meeting Tonight, Town Meeting Tonight. Welcome, America, to Historic Town Hall in New York City. And thank you for your fine response to these Thursday evening meetings. Tonight here in America's Town Meeting, we are to take up that moot question of personal liberty. Everywhere today it is being discussed.
Liberty and modern government, what about them?
They're incomparable.
Nonsense! One is impossible without the other.
Liberty today is dead.
Liberty today is more important than it ever was before.
Why? Because it's so rare?
Right! What if European nations are surrendering personal liberty wholesale? We must guard our own all the more jealously.
This already escaped my friend.
Men have died for liberty!
Died for something they never had!
Then what's your answer?
We must give up our liberty for the collective state.
We must keep our liberty to save the world.
And so the controversy runs. Our discussion tonight will shed light on the questions. Our speakers will be presented to you by our moderator, Mr. George B. Denny Jr., originator and director of America's Town Meeting of the Air. Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. The League for Political Education and the National Broadcasting Company welcome you to Town Hall. Many of you have asked for a discussion of the constitutional question. Tonight we are to have the privilege of hearing Dr. Howard Lee McVane, dean of the Graduate faculties at Columbia University and Ruggles Professor of Constitutional Law, an outstanding authority on government, who will head a panel discussion with other distinguished speakers on the subject Personal Liberty and the Modern State. Here on the platform with us are Ms. Lena Madison Phillips, prominent attorney and editor, president of the International Federation of Business and Professional Women; Roger Baldwin, executive director of the Civil Liberties Union; Henry Pratt Fairchild of New York University and chairman of the Commonwealth Federation of New York; Lawrence Dennis, author of Becoming American Fascism, an outspoken advocate of American fascism. Following Dean McVane's address, there will be a panel discussion in which all of these speakers will participate. Then we will have questions from the audience. It is now my privilege to present Dean Howard, Ruggles Professor of Constitutional Law of Columbia University, Dean McVane.
Mr. Moderator and neighbors, personal liberty can be talked about from a lot of different angles simply because it happens to be the many-sided sort of thing that it is. Consider, for example, the varying lines of thought that are called up in your minds by such well-known phrases as freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of assembly, freedom of worship, freedom of the will, freedom of the seas, free trade, free government, free competition, and so on almost without limit. But I'm inclined to believe that the personal liberty that most people in the United States are thinking and talking about today is economic liberty. And that is what I'm going to talk about. Moreover, I'm going to talk about it in an entirely non-partisan fashion. I am here neither to praise nor to damn the New Deal. In fact, I'm one of those literal persons who could not honestly answer the perfectly unfair question on which the Literary Digest is now taking a poll of this country. Be that as it may, we are told that the Republican Party is now in desperate search, not only of a standard bearer but also of a standard. That is, of an issue. But it seems to me that all signs indicate that the principal issue of the oncoming campaign is going to be the issue of economic liberty as compared with authoritarianism in government. And that issue is going to be hopelessly mixed up with, indeed identified with, the issue of the Constitution. If anybody's expecting the New Dealers to come forward with a proposal to amend the Constitution, I think he is doomed to disappointment. The New Dealers know perfectly well that the country is in no temper to amend the Constitution at the moment. But when you begin to argue about individual liberty in our country, it is inevitable that the Constitution should be invoked, as the time-honored protector of that liberty. And this plays into the hands of the opposition because the New Dealers can truthfully be accused of having tried to play fast and loose with the Constitution. They don't even deny it. They sought to give it new meaning, to give it new twists of interpretation. The Supreme Court stopped them. In other words, the Constitution has been saved, if you want to put it that way. But it has been saved by the Supreme Court, not by the Republican Party. In fact, seeing that that venerable instrument of government is about the safest thing that there is in the United States today, you can't very well make a campaign issue about it, about saving it. The most that you can say is that it would not have been saved in just the way that it has been saved if there had been no Supreme Court and if the New Dealers had had their way with it. That doesn't make the Constitution much of a campaign issue, except as showing the reckless kind of iconoclasters that some people think this proves the New Dealers to be. That alone, however, will suffice to keep the Ansel chorus ringing on the theme of the Constitution through the campaign. But disposing of the Constitution as a vital campaign issue does not at all dispose of the issue of personal liberty. In a way, of course, personal liberty is not a genuine issue either. It is rather a slogan. It is far too vague for an issue. But partisanly speaking, that makes it all the better as an issue. You can say a whole lot of nice things about personal liberty and a whole lot of hurried things about regimentation, provided you stick to generality and provided people do not think very hard or begin to probe very deeply beneath the generality. Politicians commonly bank heavily upon mental inertia of people and their incapacity or their unwillingness to do much penetrating probing. That personal liberty will probably be the overall issue of the campaign, I think is already demonstrated, by the fact that practically no one now rises to denounce the New Deal who does not hang his remarks in large part upon this major theme. I could illustrate this by quotations from almost any public utterance of a political character at any rate in the last six months, but one or two examples will suffice. An ex-New Dealer, one of the earlier apostates, writes a book called Hell Bent for Elections to prove, among other things, he says, that when we go to the polls next November, we shall be voting not for one man, not for any one party, not for any one remedy or group of remedies, but for the continuance or discontinuance of the freedom we have enjoyed under the American scheme of life. The National Association of Manufacturers, in its platform adopted here in New York just a week ago, declared vehemently for a restoration of the traditional American system, asserting that under that system, individual initiative and effort are encouraged by ensuring the maximum freedom for the individual, and that control of the individual by government must be limited to that minimum essential for the protection of individual rights and the safety of the nation. Such generalized declarations, ladies and gentlemen, are, I think, in the circumstances perhaps natural. Three years ago, a thoroughly disheartened and panic-stricken people looked to the New Deal for miracles. The New Deal plunged wildly and in a good many opposite directions at the same time, trying to lift rabbits out of a magician's hat. Of course, the miracles didn't materialize on anything like the scale that was expected, and a good many of the once disheartened became disillusioned. In its efforts, wise or unwise, to substitute government control and government responsibility for controls and responsibilities which the traditional American system had apparently failed to supply, the government in Washington of necessity began to interfere in the realm of individual liberty. I need not recite details except to recall, perhaps, that ridiculously enough, the NRA attempted to reach down in the pious scheme of regimentation to the puniest merchant, manufacturer, and shopkeeper in the land. And in doing so, it left an irritating sting and accomplished nothing useful. Likewise, the AAA reached down to the individual farmer. It controlled his productive output, but it left him instead of a sting, a comforting and compensating subsidy in the form of a check on the United States Treasury. The sting was transferred to the consumers in the form of higher prices. Such irritations as these are what the detractors of the New Deal rely on when they raise the cry of interference with individual liberty. But strange as it may seem, some of these individuals are sick and tired of the kind of liberty they have been enjoying. The AAA may be wrong in principle. Certainly paying people for doing nothing appears to me to have something essentially immoral about it. But a whole lot of farmers are tired unto despair of reveling in a priceless personal liberty that ends in giving them literally a price less crop and therefore a recurrent annual deficit. Moreover, hawkers of individual liberty in this campaign are not going to dare suggest that this kind of liberty be restored to the farmers without any sort of substitute benefit. The individual owners of oil wells in Texas and Oklahoma and Arkansas were not nearly so hot about the Supreme Court's hot oil decision as were some others, simply because they had a holy terror of a freedom of competition that would result in a truly destructive cut-throat warfare of price. Again, many of the owners and operators of the tuminous coal mines were just as keen for government control of that long-disorganized industry under the present Duffy Coal Act, which is probably unconstitutional, as were the miserably unfortunate laborers in the bituminous mines. In other words, economic circumstances sometimes produce results that make people ready and willing to pass up some of the liberty that other people, not in their circumstances, seem to be so desperately eager to preserve for them. But this, ladies and gentlemen, is not half the picture. The economic activity of individuals who own and operate their own farms or businesses does not make up the whole of the present American system, not by a long shot. It is the corporation and not the individual that now dominates the American system throughout nearly every field of economic endeavor. Of course, large numbers of corporations are still relatively small, and many of them are still privately and closely owned. These numerous figments are in many economic respects almost like natural persons. They are much more like natural persons than they are like their giant corporate brothers. But the corporations that dominate the system are not of this figment variety. Already, one half of the corporate wealth of the United States is concentrated in the hands of a paltry two-hundred corporations. Paltry in number, but mammoth in size. For the gross assets of these two-hundred range severally from about one-hundred millions of dollars to four-and-a-quarter billions of dollars, a total of more than eighty billions of dollars in all. Now, in the law of the American system and in its practice as well, each of these giant corporate aggregations of capital is just a person. Not a biological person manifested, but a person nevertheless, an artificial person, a creature made by the law in imitation of a person. And when people like the members of the Manufacturers Association talk nowadays about individual liberty, about freedom from restraint by the government, they really have in mind not so much freedom for farmers and small men of business, but freedom for these corporate persons. Please understand that I'm not in being against corporate organizations or even against stupendous concentrations of corporate wealth. A lot can be said for big business, a lot can be said for little business, and there's not much use in saying either, because a considerable part of what is left of little business is already on the skin. We are dealing here with facts, not with theories. All I am saying is that when the word "individual" is attached to the word "liberty" in an economic sense, it may not mean, indeed, it cannot, in the face of the facts, mean what it appears to mean, namely, your and my personal liberty as natural persons. It must be apparent that the liberty for a corporation is a wholly different thing from liberty for a natural person. This is true because natural persons are themselves, in large numbers drawn into the vortex of these great corporations, both as investors and as workers. And the economic liberties of the persons that are so drawn are to a very large extent determined and controlled by these corporations. Indeed, we could probably employ our time quite as profitably here tonight to discuss the topic of personal liberty under the modern corporation as we can to discuss personal liberty under government. I wish there were time to explain all this, there is not. I must be content with one or two quotations from what I regard as the most significant study dealing with the American economic system that has been made in a generation. The book was published three years ago. Its title is The Modern Corporation and Private Property. It's authors Adolf Berle and Gardner Meem. These men are no radicals. They subscribe to No-ism. They are profound students, however, of American economics and of American law. At one point, they say, "The recognition that industry has come to be determined by these economic autocrats must bring with it a realization of the hollowness of the familiar statement, that economic enterprise in America is a matter of individual initiative. To the dozen of so many in control, there is room for such initiative. For the tens and even hundreds of thousands of workers and of owners in a single enterprise, individual initiative no longer exists." They do not mean to imply that no individual may progress or improve his economic status within the corporate organization, or that his capacity as an individual never bears any relation to his progress, but he must progress if at all within the conditions that are set by the corporation. His liberty and his opportunity for initiative are no wise comparable to those of an individual who operates his own business. The individuals who invest their savings in these corporations, and there are several million such in the United States, place their money absolutely at the mercy of a handful of corporate members. Listen to what these authors say, these stopping words in regard to the situation in which the individual investor thus finds himself. "The only example of a similar subjection of the economic interest of the individual to those of a group which appears to the writers as being at all comparable is that contained in the communist system. It is an odd paradox that a corporate board of directors and a communist committee of commissars should so nearly meet in common contention. The communist thinks of the community in terms of the state, the corporation director thinks of it in terms of an enterprise. And though this difference between them may produce different results, it still remains true that the corporation director, who would subordinate the interests of the individual stockholder to those of the group, more nearly resembles the communist in mode of thought than does the protagonist of private property." This is an amazing comparison. I think it is a true comparison. Anyone who fails to see the large element of autocratic collectivism that prevails in the big corporation of our own day simply does not understand the character of the organization and the forces by which it is operated. That is the kind of person that the big corporation is. And so I say, when you listen to all the high oratory that is about to be poured out upon the country in respect of individual liberty, remember that the orators are not always talking about liberty for you and for me. And remember that not all of the restraints and the regimentation that we need to fear and guard against are those that are or may be imposed by the government.
Thank you, Dean McVane. We've now come to that part of our meeting which we call a panel discussion or symposium. Before we begin, I want to identify the members of our panel. In addition to Dean McVane, we have Ms. Lena Madison Phillips, attorney and editor; Roger Baldwin of the American Civil Liberties Union; Dr. Henry Pratt Fairchild of New York University; and Mr. Lawrence Dennis, the leading fascist spokesman. Professor Fairchild is one of the leaders of this new party movement. I wonder if you'd like to comment first on Dean McVane's remarks.
Mr. Moderator, I agree with Dean McVane in his estimate of the Literary Digest poll. When I received the first poll on the New Deal, I marked it both yes and no and sent it in. When I got the second one, I threw it in the wastebasket, which was about so much the same thing. I also agree with Dean McVane as to the folly of discussing liberty in terms of generality. Liberty is not an objective, concrete thing that you either have or do not have, like a top hat or a Rolls-Royce car. Liberty is a thing of quantity and of qualities. It's a diverse, it's a multitudinous sort of thing, and it's a perfect waste of time to speak of it as if we had it or did not have it. No man was ever completely free, and no man ever completely lacked liberty. It's all a question of where the line falls between these two equally impossible extremes. And it's very important to recognize that there is no such thing as natural liberty or natural right. Nature confers right on no one. The only right that has any reality at all is socially conferred. It's a right that society gives to the individual in the sense that it allows him to do certain things without interference and without penalty. And that is particularly true in the realm of economics, freedom or liberty. The very development of society in its continuous and consistent historical evolution has been a matter of increasing complexity, increasing organization or integration, and increasing interdependence of each individual upon other individuals and upon the social whole. But the very nature of integration or coordination means restriction. You cannot operate or function in an integrated unit, in a system, without submitting to restrictions, limitations, guidance, and direction. As society has developed, and our subject tonight is liberty in the modern state, in every modern state there has to be direction, there has to be coordination, there has to be the subordination of one's own personal interests and welfare and activity to the functioning of a complicated organic whole. The only question about liberty is, where is this direction to reside? How much, at what time, of one's personal activity, one's personal freedom of direction of himself is to be restricted, and from what quarters is the restriction to be imposed? So great is this economic organization today that no one can earn a living except as he submits to direction or management from some superior source. And it's very interesting to note, by the way, that we get very different names applied to this according to who does it. In the realm of business, especially the corporate business that Dean McVane has been talking about, we call it efficiency, organization. If the government does it, we call it regimentation. Now, that's just a case of using words to mislead people, and particularly generalized words. It isn't a matter of mere coincidence, for instance, that the champions of reaction, I am tempted to say the champions of exploitation in the modern state, have chosen that grand old word "liberty" as their slogan. That's the kind of word that you can deceive people by, because it appeals to one's natural reactions, it seems fine, and yet nobody can define it. We can all cheer it, but we cannot define it. And so my feeling about this is that the only real liberty that can possibly exist in a modern state is liberty to have your part in deciding what kind of a society you want to live in and what kind of an economic system shall function in that society. Here's Mr. Roger Baldwin over on my left here, who's a great champion of liberty, and I'd like to know what he thinks about that.
You gentlemen, in the academic world, it sounds to me as if you hadn't really had the contact with the ninety percent of the people of this country and of all other countries who have to struggle for the little they get in the world. Liberty to them is not an issue between rugged individualism and regimentation by the New Deal, which Professor McVane has given us here tonight and which you've elaborated on, Professor Fairchild. It's the economic liberty to have a job. It's the economic liberty to have decent wages, to have the right of collective bargaining, to have the power to build up political organizations of the working class, of the power in the long run to determine the future of mankind in terms of the interests of the people who produce and consume the wealth of the world. Now, I listen to you fellows here tonight, and I read a book like St. Pierre Lewis's It Can't Happen Here, and I feel that it's all between us, gentlemen. It's a matter which we have kind of handed down to us from the conception of a liberty to think and print and oppose the government, and it doesn't partake of the struggle of our time, which is a liberty of workers and farmers who organize for their own economic advancement. We know that the state is nothing but the organization of power in the hands of the dominant economic class. We know that the state is an instrument of violence to maintain that power. And the only question of our time that really matters is how we're going to have a transition to a new economic order, using, if possible, the means of political democracy. Can we do it without violence? Can we do it with a minimum of violence, as we say? Can we do what the united left in France, the middle-class folks like ourselves, the working class and the peasants are doing today, to stop fascism, to jump over it, to get into a cooperative organization of their economy, controlled by the people who do the work of France, without the resort to this black period of reaction which my friend, Mr. Lawrence Dennis over here, advocates as an antidote to communism? Now, if I got to choose, if I got to choose between what Lawrence Dennis is advocating in order to suppress the working class, I'll take the organization of the working class feeling sure that they will protect the economic and political liberties of our time if the people he represents don't undertake to use wholesale violence against them. There'll be no dictatorship.
Mr. Moderator and Mr. Baldwin, I think in this discussion we have found extraordinary unanimity of opinion as to the fundamental questions at issue. Namely, we are agreed that the old concepts of liberty are not applicable to the situation of today. That is to say, we have imposed upon us today a social discipline in the interests of order and welfare and efficiency, and of course, justice.
Mrs. Dennis, will you pardon me just a moment, please? I'm sure you won't mind this interruption when I tell you that at this point, many other radio stations are joining us. Back again in Town Hall for America's Town Meeting of the Air. The subject tonight is Personal Liberty and the Modern State. We are now in the midst of a panel discussion of the subject. Mr. Lawrence Dennis is speaking.
As I was saying, we have faced now with the problem of developing new techniques and a new philosophy of social discipline. And that means that we have necessarily to scrap some of these old concepts of liberty. But I think we're all attached to many of the values of liberty that... But I think we're all attached to many of the values of liberty, that even men like Mr. Hoover, who as usual is very much behind the times, it took him four years to find out there was a depression. But even he will find out very soon that the philosophy and theory of liberty that we have had is not applicable to modern conditions. But I do believe that we have got to develop an adequate philosophy and technique for developing liberty. Now, I suggest that the basis of our new philosophy of liberty must be trying to make as large an area of things that people can choose their occupations, or choose their tastes, or choose their various exercises as possible. I think in Germany and Italy and in Russia, in all the countries where you have extreme collectivism today, they have gone much too far in narrowing the area of safe things to do, and enlarging the area of unsafe things. I think that the thing we must aim at in this country is to have as large an area of safe acts and safe opinions and safe indulgences and safe activities.
What's safe, Mr. Dennis?
What is it consistent with the demands of your social order, whatever your social order may be? And the way to do that is to recognize that, as Professor Fairchild said, there is no liberty independent of a social order. In other words, a man has liberty to do what is good for the social scheme, and he has not liberty to do what is bad for him. Now, that is the philosophy that can enable us to develop a large measure of liberty. The basis of giving liberty of choice should be the differences, a recognition of the differences in human personality. Everybody doesn't want to read Eleanor Glynn, and everybody doesn't want to read Proust. Everybody doesn't like opera, and everybody doesn't like certain types of movie entertainment. Everybody doesn't like a Unitarian service, and everybody doesn't appreciate the spirituals of some of the evangelical cults. There should be a wide divergence of cultural, of recreational, of literary indulgences and activities, and a wide choice in the matter of careers. But the ruling principle must not be that a man is free to worship, to play, to engage in business as he wants, because even we cannot admit that liberty under the Constitution. I'm talking for a collectivism called, by any name you will, that will meet the demands of public order in the present situation.
And the individual is to be a servant of this state?
The individual must be a servant of the collective order in any state.
And the state may be a one-party state, a dictatorship?
Well, any scheme of order is a unique phenomenon. You cannot have order with everybody talking at once, or with everybody acting according to his own ideas, no.
And you think a fascist state on the whole is preferable, now that laissez-faire capitalism and political democracy are on this kids? I've heard you say that before.
Well, I think that we have the choice today between expropriation of private property or communism, and a formula of disciplined social control of our economic life, which most people call fascism. I think we either have to accept communism with expropriation of private property, or else a system which recognizes private property and does not expropriate, but adequately disciplines the use of the productive practice.
Now, if you don't see any...
Wait a minute now, who disciplines?
Well, of course, the state will just all right.
Ms. Phillips, it's your turn.
That's all I want to say yet, till I see what he says.
Well, Ms. Phillips, the state always has to exercise the disciplinary function in any order. The trouble today is that the disciplinary function is not exercised by anyone with social responsibility in many situations. In other words, a big bank or a big trust can discipline you as a small businessman, and how they can do it. Well, now, the trouble with that is not that it's discipline, because we must have discipline. The trouble with the discipline of so many powerful corporations, as Dean McVane has suggested in his paper, is that it's irresponsible. Oh, yes, I think it is. I think the big corporations do discipline. They do tell you what to do and make you do it, and if you don't do it, it's too bad for you. Now, that is discipline. The trouble with it, it's not a national discipline. It's not conceived and applied in the interest of the nation. Well, Mr. Dennis, doesn't it finally boil down to this? Isn't this the fundamental? The question whether or not the individual, in the exercise of his own personal freedom, as far as that's possible, participates either in the discipline, or participates directly in the selection of those who shall exercise the discipline. I don't like the word discipline, I'm too much of a school teacher, I don't like the word discipline. But let's call it regimentation, if you like, or organization, or efficiency. It's a question of whether or not the individual, and all individuals in the broad sense of the word, people of maturity, of ordinary intelligence, can exercise their own personal will, in, as I say, either participating in the direction itself, or in selecting those, on a democratic basis, who shall exercise the direction of that. Why, Professor Fairchild, I think it is the intention of every political system and operation in the world today to represent the people. I didn't say represent, I said the individual has the chance to help select. Well, I think even there, that it is the intention of every system to permit the individual to express a selection. But of course, the... The trouble, of course, is with the statement of your position, is that you have to find a formula for enabling the individual to express a choice, a selection. Now, do you equally have to find a formula? Oh, of course.
Who'll find it?
Well, it's found in the same way that it is found under any political system. You have a chamber of representation, and you have elections, a selection of delegates, you have a...
One party, yeah, one party.
Oh, well, now you're raising the question whether you should have one party or many parties. Now, that is really the question. You're raising the question whether you should have an alternation, a rotation of parties, or whether you should have a unique party. Now, both fascism and communism are single-party, or uni- unique-party systems. Now, if that's what you're attacking, then that is ground for a long discussion. Well, no, look here, aren't you mixing up the political aspect and the economic aspect?
I see no difference between the two.
Well, the rest of us do see a lot of difference.
I know.
You don't see any difference between capitalism and socialism?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, lots of difference. I mean, if people have got the right kind of attitude, if people recognize the necessity of integration and coordination, you can operate your economic system with only one party. You don't have to have a conflict of parties in operating an economic system that everybody's agreed on. Well, in operating that, though, in operating that, you will do it as a political system. No, I will. Maybe you will, but not I. Well, I think... I think there's no other way of operating it. As a matter of fact, you assume that the court and the enforcement of law is not the function of the state. You would have no operation of your economic system without the exercise of the coercive functions of government. Not at all. You've got to have the courts in the state there as an agency of recourse when things go wrong in your economic system. When things are going wrong all the time, your courts are clogged with judicial processes for the enforcement of contracts and for the collection of damages, and so on and so on. You cannot operate any economic system without the constant intervention and coercion of the state. So I cannot, I cannot accept any compartmentalization of our activities. That is why I believe in a totalitarian philosophy and scheme of governance. Do you mind defining that term? No, not at all. I believe that that simply means an all-embracing, social or national scheme. In other words... That sounds like communism to me. Communism is quite as totalitarian as fascism. What kind of totalitarianism do you like? Well, I prefer the fascist, because it doesn't expropriate private property, and it doesn't go over the class wall.
Now, we got down to it, yeah.
You're going to have a job for everybody, too, in that, in that new totalitarian state?
Well, if you don't have a job for everybody, it won't be a success as a totalitarian state, because the idea implies that everybody is provided for, and has a function and a place, and is doing his bit.
I suppose it wouldn't be sad to ask if you'd have a job for women, too, and particularly the old maids.
Well, there shouldn't be too many old maids. We would have jobs... We would have jobs for most of the women as wives.
I agree with you on that, that there shouldn't be too many old maids.
We would discourage old maids as much as possible.
That's the first real argument you've made for your case.
Thank you. Aren't they just the ones that need encouragement, Mr. Dennis? Aren't the old maids just the ones that need encouragement more than anybody else?
Now, it's the men that need the encouragement.
I want to go back to something that Dean McVane spoke of when he spoke of the concentration of wealth in the hands of two hundred corporations, and of the separation of management, even, from ownership. And ask him, if he sees any connection, perhaps not, but does he see any connection between that and that statement that was made by Brookings Institute last spring? That thirty-six thousand people at one end of the economic ladder received as much as eleven million people at as much income as eleven million people at the other end? And ask him further, we've talked a good deal about liberty being a relative term and all the rest of it, but can there be any liberty for a person who, well, even qualified, cannot find a job? Is there any liberty in that?
You want me to answer this question?
Yes, I'd like you to.
Well, I don't know that that can be defined in terms of liberty, certainly a queer sort of liberty, but I, I am not prepared to say that it's the obligation of the state. I don't know whether it is or not, to provide a job for everybody.
That's qualified?
We've got to change our political economic order enormously, in order to bring that about. Any objection to that? Not from my point of view.
Well, if the state doesn't provide the jobs, mustn't it provide a good reasonable standard of living, without any imputation of charity or deficiency on the part of the person that doesn't get the job?
I don't think that's enough, Professor Fairchild.
Well, I'm willing to have some more, what did you add?
Well, I think that the, the state or the social order should provide a job for everybody who's qualified and able and willing and wants to work. And it's not enough either for the dole, or even for insurance, that he's entitled to work.
It works a good thing in itself.
Well, whether it's a good thing or not, I wouldn't think that I had very much liberty if I had to take my income from the state or from the dole.
But suppose everybody got the same general income? Every family, as a matter of course. You don't fuss because you can drive on roads without paying for them. You don't fuss because you get your mail carried at a very, very reasonable figure. Suppose everybody, on exactly the same basis, was provided with a good reasonable standard of living, start with, and then they competed for additional things above that level. Would that be bad?
Now, you're not likely to get that kind of an order.
I think we are.
I'm sorry, Professor Fairchild. You, you people are about to get into the field of the discussion that's provided for next week. When Secretary Perkins and Mr. George Sikolsky meet together on this platform to talk about the question, should we plan for social security? So before our time is up tonight, I think we'd better let the audience in on this discussion. Now, when you have a question, please rise, state your name, the person to whom your question is directed, you can ask anybody up here, and the question, question please. This man here raised his hand. All right?
What guarantee will Mr. Dennis...
Your name, please.
Mrs. Flaherty. What guarantee will Mr. Dennis give us? That his type of fascism won't have the concomitant cast-royal beatings for all liberals, communists, socialists, or any other people who think that it goes on in Italy and in Germany?
Mr. Dennis, what guarantee have you that your type of fascism won't be as bad as it is in Italy and Germany? Assuming it's bad there.
Well, the only guarantee we have in any country of the quality of the government we get, of course, is the quality of the people who do it. Now, I hope and believe that in this country, we should develop a much more humane transition to a collective order than has occurred in Germany or Italy, for the simple reason that we don't face the extreme crises that they face. That is, we don't face them now. And I think we have the advantages of a much more favorable situation, and less conflict of race and class than characterize the rise of those fascists themselves.
Lady, that's good.
Will Mr. Dennis please discuss, or say...
Your name, please.
Mrs. Orsay, Mr. Dennis.
Mrs. Orsay to Mr. Dennis.
Will Mr. Dennis please discuss the personal liberty under the modern European states, as against personal liberty under our American, United States government?
Mr. Dennis, he wants you to compare personal liberty in this country as compared with personal liberty in European countries. Fascist countries.
Of course, that's a very big order, and I naturally can't do a good job in it in a minute. I would say that the essential difference is that there they have what is recognized as a planned society, a totalitarian state, which undertakes to dictate far more measures of economic and social importance than our government does. Accordingly, liberties are circumscribed by the demands of a plan, just as traffic in New York today has much less liberty than it had when I was a boy and rode a bicycle in New York. The reason being, not that people have changed their views about liberty of traffic circulation, but the traffic has become heavier, and it has become necessary to have more minute regulations. So I would say in those countries, the difference in personal liberty is the demand, the difference in the demand of order and efficiency under a centralized scheme of planning. Now, when we get more centralized planning, we will curtail liberty accordingly. Now, of course, you might say, what kind of a plan? Now, you can have a lot of different plans. I have my own idea how we should plan. It may not be adopted, I can't guarantee that it will. Whatever plan, whatever plan we adopt, when we will adopt the plan, that plan will require a lot of social discipline. I hope that we get a good plan, and it's up to you people and the country at large to see that we do.
The private corporate. Mr. Dennis, is that plan in that new book of yours?
I hope so, I believe it is.
Enter. Mrs. Flack to Mr. Dennis. Somebody else, somebody else.
Of course, we know that fascism in Italy and Germany, and wherever else they come, comes into power without the consent of the governed. It's taxation without representation. In other words, on the theory that might is right, does Mr. Dennis care to defend that theory?
Mr. Dennis, do you care to defend the theory that might is right?
Well, I don't agree, of course, with the premise, and I don't think we would get anywhere by arguing over the premise. I don't agree that fascism has come into power without the consent of the governed, Italy, in any of those countries. I think that it has had the consent of the governed. But that is an issue of fact.
Yes?
Miss Flaherty, Miss Phillips.
Miss Flaherty to Miss Phillips.
With inventions, labor-saving devices constantly coming on the market, how are you going to supply jobs unless you have a commission to see and tell when those inventions shall be applied?
Phillips, how do you expect to apply, have a job for everyone with all the new inventions coming on the market?
Well, I'd get a good many of them by raising the standard of living. We, I think, have ample proof of, in housing, in crop production, and all the rest of it, that we're, most of us are living on a, quite a subnormal basis. But even when that's all taken up, I still believe that every person has a right to make his own contribution to the society in which he lives, by working, if he wants to do it, and if he's qualified to do it. And if there weren't jobs enough to go around, then I'd shorten the working hour, I'd shorten the, I'd shorten the working day until there was an equitable amount of work and an equitable income for everybody.
Gentlemen back there, Mrs. Mangold, I would like to ask Mr. Baldwin... Mr. Mangold and Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, to explain a little further why he believes there would be more liberty under a worker's state, that is, a state where the workers control the government.
Mr. Baldwin, why do you think there'd be more liberty under a worker's state than under the kind of state Mr. Dennis is talking about?
Well, for the very simple reason that a worker's state would represent the interest of approximately, let us say, ninety percent of the people of a country.
of approximately, let us say, ninety percent of the people of a country. A state today represents the organization of business and of credit, and obviously represents the interests of a small minority. Now, I am not prepared to say that a working-class state would not follow some of the dictatorial forms which we've already seen in the Soviet Union, made necessary, I think, by the previous dictatorship of the Zau. I don't share Mr. Dennis's view that you've got to choose between a fascist dictatorship and a communist dictatorship, and he likes the fascist dictatorship better, because it protects the interests of private property. If I've got to choose, I know which one I'm going to take. But I suspect that if the transition to a new economy, a cooperative economy, can be made by retaining democratic institutions, relative as they are, that we will have then a working-class state that will not be dictatorial, and in which you will preserve the values of liberty and democracy.
Isn't that a threat, Mr. Baldwin, to, for the worker's state to destroy all the property owners first, to liquidate the...
Well, you'll have to socialize them, Mr. Dennis.
That's what you're calling, is it?
Ask.
Mr. Lasso, Mr. Dennis, and also to Mr. Baldwin.
Thanks.
What will the two systems allow youth of the coming generation, what liberty will they give them?
Ah, if a young man wants to know from Mr. Dennis and Mr. Baldwin what their programs provide for you, Mr. Dennis?
Well, I think, of course, any attempt at a new social order is bound to have greater appeal to youth than the defense of the old order, because it's in the nature of a revolutionary change. It's a great adventure. It gives youth opportunity. It is precisely the youth of Germany and Italy who have made fascism in those countries so vigorous. And I'm not defending either. I'm simply stating the fact that those fascists have enlisted the support and enthusiasm of youth. As Mr. Walter Littman told a very conservative group of people in this country recently, that the trouble with the present system was that it was failing to enlist the enthusiasms of youth. Now, what enlists the enthusiasm of youth, of course, is the process of rapid and dramatic social change.
Well, of course, your fascisms enlisted the enthusiasms of youth, pulled them into supporting their dictator, and led them into the labor camps. The youth of Italy and Germany are today either in the armies of Mussolini, fighting a colonial venture in Africa, or they're in the forced labor camps.
We have several hundred thousand youth in labor camps in this country who are taking the best to be there.
Not the same kind of camps. On it. Mr. Baldwin to Mr. Dennis.
Sitting here, it's kind of hard to distinguish and check Mr. Dennis's real position. He sort of feels his audience before he talks. He wavers about and maneuvers, you don't know what state and what position he really is.
Now, my dear sir, we want your question.
The question is, I'm forced to say that, I'm forced to ask this question, who pays Mr. Dennis for his...
Ah, that's right. Out of order. No question?
Mr. Baldwin. Mr. McMahon.
Mr. McManus to Mr. Baldwin.
Just the fact that the wealth of the world, confined to corporate bodies, necessarily commits the power of controlling this wealth to their hands, not to the people.
Mr. Baldwin, certainly, that's the great conflict in the United States, that you pride the work of political democracy in this country in the face of an industrial dictatorship. And you can't make political democracy work successfully when you've got an industrial dictatorship. Professor McVane said that, and even Lawrence Dennis has suggested it. I haven't got the same answer. And the attempt today to make capitalism and the government synonymous is one of the indications, that you've got this confusion of mind in the part of the property system that liberty and the Constitution belong to them. Ask. What's that?
Mr. Baldwin, he does not say that the old capitalistic competitive system is absolutely dead, and fascism is but a method analogous to the embalming of a corpse to keep it going a long...
All right, you've got it.
I, a, a cooperative economic relationship, each with all, and all with each for the good of all, and all...
You've got your question. Mr. Baldwin, do you think that capitalism, old-fashioned capitalism, is dead, and that fascism is a state of embalming old capitalists?
Well, it's perfectly obvious that fascism has been sliding downhill in recent years, and that the device used to ticket is the organization of Mr. Dennis's state. He's endeavoring by a single-party control of the industrial process. He talks about it as if it were a people's state, as if everybody was sharing in it. The discipline was for everyone. But that planned state of Mr. Dennis's is a state planned to keep the rich, rich, and the poor, poor.
Back there to Mr. Dennis, Mr. Novak.
Novak to Mr. Dennis.
Should social discipline be imposed by some one party or one individual who identifies himself with the state, or should it be developed democratically by the masses themselves?
Dennis, should social discipline be imposed by one party, or should it be developed democratically by the masses?
I would answer both, and together. The one is a collateral to the other. The masses can only express their will for social order and maximum social welfare by giving a mandate to a competent party with competent machinery and with sound principles. So there's really no alternative there. The two things go together. The people cannot rule individually. The people can only rule through a party and the government. They have to give a mandate and then hope that it works. If it doesn't work, it's their bad luck, but the people cannot govern, each one doing as they please it.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. We cannot hope to cover this subject very thoroughly in the time at our disposal, but we'll have another meeting on this question later on this season. Likely to be a hot question for a long time. And now, Mr. Villar has an important announcement for next week.
Next week at this hour, the topic for discussion will be, Should We Plan for Social Security? The United States Secretary of Labor, the Honorable Francis Perkins, and Mr. George Isokolski, internationally known author and journalist, will be the speakers. If you would like to come to this broadcast, or to the broadcast the following week, when Professor William Lyon Phelps and other prominent authors will speak, a limited number of tickets will be available through the League for Political Education to our friends of the radio audience. Would you like a copy of tonight's broadcast, or of any of the others on this series? Arrangements have been made with one of America's leading publishing houses to print these broadcasts in series, and they may be obtained at the nominal cost of ten cents each, if you will write directly to the League for Political Education, The Town Hall, 123 West 43rd Street, New York City. The League for Political Education, The Town Hall, 123 West 43rd Street, New York City. Copies of earlier broadcasts are obtainable at the same price, or you may send one dollar for any ten.
I'll meet next week. I'll meet next week. Should we plan for social security? Should we plan for social security?
This is the National Broadcasting Company.